The President'sание of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will call this the board meeting in District 544 to order. I'll give you two policies.
Yes. Kirby Anderson.
Here.
Natalie Knutson.
Here.
Melanie Cole.
Present.
Matthew Lempke. Missy Hermes.
Present.
Steven Biggessa.
Here.
We have a forum.
Thanks. Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
A second?
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Our agenda is approved. So we'll kick off our public meeting, The World's Best Workforce, presented by our curriculum director, Amelia Lamar. Thank you.
Yeah. Good evening. Thank you. Thank you for your time here today. Tonight I'll be presenting The World's Best Workforce Report. This is the last World's Best Workforce Report under this title. As moving forward, it's going to be referred to as the Comprehensive Achievement and Civic Readiness Report. Tonight's report presents information from the 23-24 school year. The World's Best Workforce Report is a comprehensive annual report required by Minnesota state law for us to assess and communicate progress in four education areas. Fergus Falls Public Schools is unique in that the term Fergus Falls Public Schools, or ISD 544, refers to more than just our traditional brick and mortar schools. It also includes information from our Alternative Learning Center, or ALC, and IQ Academy. I will do my best to clarify any parts of information presented that encompass all of those pieces together, or any that refer to one of those three areas. Before areas presented on this evening include school readiness, closing the achievement gap, career and college readiness, and high school graduation. The first area focuses around school readiness. Here we're looking at the level of development across various skill sets of students entering kindergarten. This data refers to students from our Otter preschool program last year who are now kindergarten students currently enrolled at Lincoln School. In Otter preschool last year, we served eighty-one four- and five-year-olds during the course of the school year. Additionally, over one hundred and fifty families participated in our Early Childhood Family Education Program. This includes a multitude of parent and child classes that focused around direct play and learning time together, including skill-specific courses such as music and movement. ECFE also includes home visits and outings around the areas such as Otter Cove and the Prairie Butler Learning Center. Of the eighty-one children served who attended Otter preschool, forty-one percent qualified for free and reduced lunch, and fifteen percent received special education services. Eighty-eight percent of those students were fully or partially ready for kindergarten. Students are screened for kindergarten in their first few weeks of starting the school year across seven areas. These areas are based off the Early Childhood Indicators of Progress, or ESIP standards provided by the Minnesota Department of Education. It is not expected that all children fully meet or exceed any or all of these areas upon entering kindergarten. It is understood that not all children are at the same developmental stages, which is a large part of what kindergarten is for. This is a guideline to understand what skill set each child is entering school with, and to gain an understanding of what areas need the most support, individually and collectively, to best support their transition to school and readiness to learn. The next few slides will take us up together through each of the seven areas that are reviewed. The first area focuses around math and reading concepts, skills from naming basic shapes such as a circle, square, rectangle, to identifying colors and sorting objects into identifying categories such as a teddy bear feels soft. Additionally, fundamental counting skills on an increasing level of difficulty from rope counting to fifteen, to counting objects both like and unalike, to recognizing numbers. While each of those skills focus around the concept of simple counting, counting allowed is different than counting objects, which is also different than recognizing written symbols, and then correlating that to its quantitative value. As you can see, fifty-four percent of Otter preschool students were fully ready in the area of math and science. However, knowing that we do not expect students to have a full mastery of any or all areas upon entering kindergarten, we look at the partial and readiness together. Therefore, eighty-three percent of Otter preschool students were fully or partially ready in this area. The second area revolves around reading. This skill focuses around a concept called print awareness, meaning the understanding that the words in a book are what carry the meaning, and identifying varied components of a book such as the front and back cover, understanding that the author is the person who writes the stories, an illustrator, and seller. Additionally, students can recognize some letters, both upper and lowercase. Then an increase in skill includes rhyming words and understanding that the letters themselves have sounds. As per usual, we have students who enter kindergarten with a wide range of skills, from not being able to identify letters or parts of a book, to even having emerging independent readers. Oh, I forgot to tell you the percent, sorry. Seventy-three percent of Otter preschool students were partially or fully ready in this area upon entering kindergarten this fall. Next up is writing. This skill focuses around the physical act of writing, including shapes, letters, and various formations. This is a fine motor skill that continues to develop well into elementary school. Understanding writing as a form of communication also correlates back to that reading concept that text and words themselves carry meaning. Eighty-eight percent of Otter preschool students were partially or fully ready in this area upon entering kindergarten this fall. The next area marks the last in our academic realm and looks at listening and speaking skills. It revolves around stamina in listening, such as being able to listen to a storybook, speaking aloud to answer questions or communicate, and following two-to-three step directions. This might be something as simple as please hang up your coat, find your seat, and take out a pencil. Ninety-three percent of Otter preschool students were partially or fully ready in this area upon entering kindergarten this fall. The remaining three areas look at aspects outside of the academic readiness piece. Many of these skills are primarily developed outside of school but play a role in students' preparedness for the structure of kindergarten. This area includes physical skills from being able to do things like successfully use the restroom independently, to both, excuse me, fine and large motor skills. Our ECFE classes, kindergarten registration time, and resources from teachers help provide families with resources in any of these areas as needed. In general, kids love to move. So while there are students who need assistance in some of these areas, the vast majority come to kindergarten already mastered or partially mastering this area. Ninety-nine percent of Otter preschool students were partially or fully ready in this area upon entering kindergarten this fall. This area revolves around a child's social readiness and emotional readiness and maturity. These students are little, and for many of them, this is their first formal experience in school. So what we're looking for in this area is that they're able to communicate their needs and feelings. This can be something like telling their teacher when they do in fact have to use the restroom. Two, they feel sad because they fell down on the playground while running. They also have a reasonable understanding of what the rules and expectations are when at school, and their routines, such as where to hang up their backpack and how to navigate the larger parts of their school days. Finally, they have a developing sense of self-control, including personal space. This is simply a skill that many of them just simply have not had to consider before. Again, a lot of these skills are developed as kindergarten progresses and students settle in, they learn who their teacher and classmates are, and understand how to navigate through those routines in their days. Ninety-one percent of Otter preschool students were partially or fully ready in this area upon entering kindergarten this fall. Finally, the last skill focuses around the arts. This includes being able to play creatively, use imagination, and the willingness to explore. Similar to the last few skills, this correlates directly to a student's prior knowledge and their personality, and are often supported and developed through those first few months of school. Ninety-eight percent of Otter preschool students were partially or fully ready in this skill upon entering kindergarten this fall. All in all, students who attended Otter preschool are consistently ready for kindergarten. They have an expected level of academic knowledge at the very ripe age of five and six, and they are ready to learn. The second goal area is titled Closing the Achievement Gap. Last school year, sixteen point five percent of students received special education services and forty-two point two percent qualified for free and reduced lunch. Please note that these percentages represent ISD 544, which includes all three subsections of our brick and mortar schools, ALC and IQ Academy combined. There are a lot of numbers on this page. I'm not going to go through each and every row, however, it does show the proficiency percentages across multiple different demographics between ISD 544 versus the state of Minnesota average. Please, again, I know I just said it, but recall that ISD 544, whenever you're reviewing those, or excuse me, test scores, graduation rate, and so on, Fergus Falls Public Schools indicates not just our traditional schools of McKinley, Cleveland, Kennedy, and so on, it also includes ALC and IQ Academy combined. Therefore, the proficiency numbers listed there under ISD 40. ISD 544 includes all of those areas. Some of these breakdowns include just one or two students, while some include multiple hundreds of students. One other consideration I'd like you to be aware of anytime you're analyzing testing data is the understanding of students who choose to opt out of the MCA exams. Every student and their family have the right to opt out of MCA exams. What many people simply don't realize is that that is not not counted, instead it counts as a zero and counts against our district. I only share this with you because we do have students who choose to opt out. They have the right to do so, as do their families. Last year, we had anywhere from one to fifteen percent of students opt out of the MCA exams at any given grade level of our brick and mortar schools, and anywhere from forty to seventy-four percent at any given grade level through IQ Academy. Again, the act of opting out is not the focus here, it is just taking things into consideration as you generate your own depiction of what these numbers mean. Nonetheless, as you can see, all areas of reading and the majority of math scored higher than the state average with all three of our subsections combined. The third area is titled Career and College Readiness. We have a continually growing and evolving Career in Technical Education, or CTE, program. Work-based learning, for example, offers students to explore various career fields that they may be interested in, including research, shadowing, and even interning in most career-filled areas. Additionally, we offer more than forty-five CTE courses across agricultural science, automotive, business, computer science and technology, family consumer science, health science, industrial tech, manufacturing, and robotics. The ACT is a standardized test designed to measure college and career readiness by assessing students' skills in English, mathematics, reading, and science reasoning. Colleges and universities often use ACT scores as part of their admission process. The composite score for Fergus Falls High School was twenty point six as compared to the national average of nineteen point four. In general, students tend to be quite passionate about their CTE choices and opportunities as they explore various skills that they are passionate about, explore various career fields, and begin thinking about what their futures might look like after high school. Finally, the last area of this report focuses around graduation rates. As with previous portions of this report, we have three subsections under the umbrella of Fergus Falls Public Schools. Graduation rates tend to be offset in reporting by the Minnesota Department of Education. Therefore, these graduation rates reflected here are from spring of 2023, as 2024 has not yet been released. So going back two springs, you can see the graduation rate of Fergus Falls Public Schools, including Kennedy, ALC, and IQ, was eighty point one percent. A further breakdown shows that Kennedy High School had a graduation rate of ninety-three point eight percent, the ALC of sixty-three point nine percent, and IQ Academy of fifty-nine point five percent. Take just a moment to talk about IQ Academy. This is an all-online public school with students located all across the state. We started the 23-24 school year with five hundred and sixty-nine students enrolled across K-12, but we served a total of nine hundred and eighty-nine students throughout the course of last school year. Of the five hundred and sixty-nine students we started with, we ended the year with seven hundred and twenty-five students, but had a total of two hundred and sixty-four withdrawals from IQ throughout the course of the school year. So, in the event you did any mental math there, that means we ended the school year with one hundred and fifty-six more students than we started with, but at the same time we had a total of two hundred and fifty-four withdrawals. So therefore, we have numerous students who enroll, withdraw, and some that go back and forth multiple times throughout the school year. When MDE calculates graduation rates for IQ, they take into account what school a student has been with the longest, and whether or not they have enrolled in another school, and if they have, how long they have been at that school. So we don't really have a very strong way of predicting what our graduation rate will be from IQ from the state perspective with such high levels of enrollment fluctuation. What we can do though is keep track of the students who are enrolled in the springtime at the time of graduation. So, again, we're going back two springs here. So looking at the seniors at IQ in the spring of 23, ninety percent of those students enrolled at that time, or seniors, excuse me, at that time, were on track to graduate. Six of those students did not graduate for reasons such as not passing classes, dropping last minute, et cetera. Twelve percent of seniors at that time enrolled in IQ not on track to graduate. Therefore, they came into IQ already missing credits they would need to graduate at the end of that year. All of the seniors enrolled in spring of 23, seventy-eight point seven eight percent of them graduated. Switching over to the ALC, students entered that program already identified as one or more years behind schedule. The ALC works very hard to provide highly individualized programming to support students working toward their high school diploma while often working full-time, living independently or a variety of other life circumstances. Students at the ALC are often very interested in various CTE courses such as automotive and small engines. Students at the ALC work very hard to achieve their diploma, and we are always very proud of all of the work they do do for that. Currently, we are working on identifying students leaving middle school in seventh or eighth grade who may or may not benefit from programming at the ALC, so they can begin their high school career right in ninth grade at the ALC rather than joining at a later grade already identified as one or more years behind schedule.
Amelia.
Yep.
With, is there data that splits out just the ALC from a state level versus our ALC? I mean, is there data that...
You can look through Minnesota Report Card if you want to send me an email. I can see what I can find and send it to you.
All right.
I don't have it here, if that's fair. To conclude, this report demonstrates a continued growth and commitment from our youngest students up through our seniors. We are fortunate to have a staff filled with highly talented educators who are dedicated to supporting every student regardless of where they've been. From school readiness to career readiness and graduation, we will continue to work to support the full potential of all students. I will now accept any other questions from the board.
Any questions for Amelia?
No, thanks for the break.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too.
Thank you.
All right. So we will move on to our resolution on acknowledgements. Thank you to Charlie Bond for the donation of art supplies, tools, and storage containers to the Area Learning Center in memory of Dale "Throttle" Bond, class of 1966. Someone offer that resolution?
After that resolution, we'll put it's adoption.
In a second?
I'll second.
And Missy, will you take a roll?
Mm-hmm. Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Biggessa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to our reports for the night, and we'll start with a fall sports update from...
I did send a report out this afternoon, if you got a chance to see it, but I also printed one out that you have in front of you because I added a couple of things at the end. A couple of things of note, our numbers again remain healthy. I know our class sizes are going up a little bit, but that is also reflecting in the number of students that are participating in our activities. One difference you may notice this year is there has been a concerted effort, and this comes all the way from the state high school league down, in making sure we're properly identifying our teams, especially when it comes to state high school league teams versus school teams versus non-school teams, just for eligibility purposes. And so one of those things is where we run into it is with middle school. When you have middle school athletes or middle school teams are not considered state high school league and should be separate. We did a couple of things this year to do that. Cross-country somewhat, even though it was somewhat shaped the way it's been in the past with separate races, we really made an effort to make sure that that middle school team was separate, they were getting the coaching and the things that were age-appropriate. Probably a bigger change was in our soccer program, where we were running in the forties, and it really made it difficult to get everybody out there playing and developing like they should. You have some of the eighth graders playing against sophomores and juniors. And in the Central Lakes Conference, that's not a good thing. You got some people that are double the size. Some of these kids we were throwing out there. So we made the decision last winter to try to really make sure that we pushed to have enough kids for a middle school team, and when you have eleven that are out on the field at any given time, we need to make sure our numbers were there, and they were. So I did add those in just so you could have a comparable number to 2023. In 2023, I counted middle school kids in for our cross-country teams as well as our soccer because they were part of our JV. And as you can see, even though it says we had three hundred and twenty-eight versus three hundred and seventy-six, really if I'd have done apples to apples on it, we would have had three hundred and eighty-eight this year for different activities. And so, and I'm happy to say with those two middle schools, both cross-country and soccer having those middle school programs were really a benefit. The feedback from parents, from the athletes, the coaches were very, very positive on that, and they had very successful seasons. Sportsmanship, we did win four out of the seven again this year, and I'm going to talk about sportsmanship at the end here, the sportsmanship award. That is something we are very proud of. Team academics, through the coaches associations, we have, what we do is we add up the average of our GPAs of all varsity players that are tenth grade and above. If they're ninth grade or below, they don't have a GPA yet. But tenth grade and above, and it includes everyone that's on that team, and I think it's like a three point seven or three point eight, you get gold status. And two of our teams this fall, volleyball and tennis, in fact, I think tennis was about as close to a four point oh as you can get for when you add up all the athletes on the team, that was pretty amazing. And volleyball, very, very similar. So they both won the gold. Just a couple notes on that. The coaches association sends us plaques, and they send two of them. And the idea is after you fill up the second one, and these are just little plates that go on it, I do a quick math in my head, there's probably about forty-some, room for about forty-some on each plaque. And then they said, well, you'll go about ten years, and then once you get two of them filled up, go ahead and take them off the first one. We filled up three in the last six years, so I kind of talked them into ordering us a third, and then I got them to send us a fourth that I had to pay for. But we actually have four plaques up right now just from the last few years of all of our teams that are reaching gold or silver academically. So, again, that's something that we are very proud of, and again, goes along with the idea that those that are in activities are still doing very well in the classroom. Here's a list, and also you'll see a list of our state participants. Two teams made it, boys cross-country got second place in the session and qualified in for a third year enrolled for state tournament. Great job by them. And our football team also qualified for state as a team. You see other individuals there for tennis. First time in quite a while we've had girls tennis players qualify for state, and that was fun to see. Cassie Wellman in cross-country, for girls cross-country, she finished sixth in the state. It's pretty amazing, just a sophomore, and if you know Cassie, you know she has to take a few extra steps compared to everybody else just with her height, and she is so much fun to watch. But she finished sixth. And then we had a very good showing from our swim team. And then also listed, going on to the next page, our CLC All-Conference and Honorable Mention. Individual academics, I listed, again, we have four volleyball players individually that made academic, got the Academic All-State Award. And then also our MTCA Academic All-State. Most of the time, these are just reserved for seniors. So that's why, you know, we have a fantastic GPA as a team, but we only have a few individuals named for all-state. For some of these, like the tennis one, that is reserved for seniors, you can see all five of our seniors made it. So that was pretty impressive. Again, one thing you will not, you'll notice that on all of these, whether it's the academic, the state participant, or the CLC, the All-Conference and Honorable Mentions, and individual academics, we also have a lot of football players on that. I can't release all of those awards yet, the bank list is not till the fifteenth of December. But we did win obviously numerous district awards, academic awards, and different things there, so that was quite a list too, that I would love to share with you right now, but I just can't until the bank list time because none of them know they have one of those. Coaching recognitions, we also had some coaches recognize Rachel Cox as the Section 8AA Swimming Coach of the Year, and her assistant Jen Jensen was named the 8AA Assistant Coach of the Year. Chris Grabowska, that one is public here, he knows he has this, so I can say this. He was the Mid-Northwest District Coach of the Year, and Shane Tilke was named the Mid-Northwest District Assistant Coach of the Year for football. Fine Arts, our musical wrapped up a couple of weeks ago, four nights. It was absolutely unbelievable. I hope everyone got a chance to go see it. They did an outstanding job, not just the leads in it, which really helped carry up, but the whole ensemble cast. Very, very successful show. The numbers were still, when I looked at the number of tickets sold, it did very, very well again on those four nights, even though they ran into some conflicts that were kind of out of their control. So Thursday night's not always the biggest night, the opening night. It's usually Friday and Saturday, and we ran into Friday night, a state football game, was that same night, and they moved the deer hunting opener back a week. So that affects everything around here. So the numbers probably weren't even as high as they could have been with the, with some of the hype that was going around after the first couple of performances. It was an outstanding show, I got to see it on that Saturday night, and they did an unbelievable job, so congratulations to our cast as well as our directors. And we are right in the middle of our music season, our concert season tonight. We have the high school band concert, and then choir will be in two weeks, two weeks from Monday, or tonight, and then the last Wednesday before Christmas break is our high school orchestra, as well as our middle school concerts and things in between. Couple other updates, just to get back to, I said I was going to come back to the sportsmanship award. At the last CLC Governance Board meeting, which was in early November, and that's where eighties principals and superintendents are all invited to this meeting, our conference secretary, Roger Wilson, announced that Fergus Falls had officially taken over the most sportsmanship awards throughout the history of our conference. And again, this is probably a good time to remind you of what happens with that award is for every sport, the coach, at least is supposed to, and most do, they talk to their players, and they ask them which team in the conference of the ten teams displayed the best sportsmanship. And it often revolves around several things. First and foremost, obviously, is how our athletes compete, how they are on the floor, on the field, on the ice, or whatever it is, and how they compete, how our coaches behave. But also, it mixes in a couple of other things, as well as our student section. So what's it like for them when they come to Fergus Falls? Is it a good experience, a bad experience, how we host them, things like that. So all those things are factors in, and then each team gets one vote at the end of the season, and each sport has a sportsmanship award. And it was sometime last year, and I've kind of, I alluded to this in the past, where I've said we are really catching up with everyone else, even in the league in 2005, I think it was. Most of the others have been here since the mid-nineties. You can see I added the totals, and this is what's added to that sheet that wasn't in the email that I sent today. We've received a hundred and twelve since we joined the league, which is a little over six per year, which is somewhere between one-third and one-fourth of all of the sportsmanship awards that are handed out. We get about, between a fourth and a third, up close to a third of them. So that's, again, that says it's across the board, it's not just one program, it's the whole effort there. And you can see the rest of the totals. Detroit Lakes doesn't have any by it because this is the first year.
None?
This is the first year that there's a CLC, and they didn't get any this fall, but of course we got four out of seven this fall, so there wasn't much left of that again. So, but again, and every team has been represented. So, but again, and every team has been represented, even since I've been, this is my ninth year now. Every single team that, that we offer, every sport that we offer has gotten it in the last, I think it's been six years, at least once. So again, that says a lot about our athletes and the job our coaches are doing. I shared a quick story in this. When we announced it, there was a little applause there, and people, you know, were appreciative of that. And then one of the superintendents said that, he just commented how they, they loved competing against Fergus. They said, it's always a, they're a great contest, it's great competition, it's intense, it's one of our fiercest rivals, that said this. He said, but they do it the right way, and the sportsmanship is there, and this is very well deserved, and we should take this very, we should take this as a great honor. So that was from a superintendent of another school that, that said that when they announced that at that last meeting. So it is something we're proud of. And again, you'll notice on here, some of the teams that got it this year from our swimming, boys cross country. Boys cross country won the CLC this year, so they don't just give it to someone that, oh, you didn't do so well, let's give you the sportsmanship. Swimming finished very high up in the, in the ranks. Cross country was in the, girls cross country was in the top half, and the boys won it. So it definitely, they do look at that sportsmanship part. Last little bit, then I can answer any questions. Couple additions that we've added to our activities program over the course of this year. I've already mentioned, we added middle school soccer. That was an extremely successful program this year for us. It allowed, first of all, our middle school age athletes not to be competing against students that are three or four years older than them, and developing bad habits and everything else, and kind of playing scared really is what they were doing. Soccer is a very physical sport, so by letting them compete against other seventh or eighth graders. But it also helped our high school kids. That was the big thing. Our JV kids, our ninth graders, 10th graders, and even 11th graders that were playing on JV, there's 11 out there, but we had 32 kids sitting on the sideline, all trying to, the coaches are trying to get all 32 kids in there, including middle school kids. And as a ninth or a 10th grader or 11th grader, that can be very frustrating, trying to get your minutes. You want to prove you can be on the varsity that next year, and you're sharing your time with 17, 18, seventh and eighth graders. So it had a double effect on there. It really helped those kids develop on our JV, but it also helped them develop an age appropriate. And the other addition that we've had to our high school offerings that has just started here a couple of weeks ago is esports. Esports is taking the world by storm. That's where they are. Yes, they're playing video games, competing against other schools. And we have offered that this year. There are college scholarships now for this. College teams are running these. And it really offers an opportunity for some of those students that really want to compete, really want to be involved with the school. Again, when you look at our academics, I want, you know, I would love it if 100% of our students were involved in some kind of activity. It doesn't have to be a sport. Could be music, drama, arts, esports, any of those things. I just think it helps them hold themselves accountable, and they're better students. So this is one more opportunity we had. As of this morning, we had 16 students enrolled in that. I know at least two more came into our office and signed up today. So that is growing quickly, and I expect that to be a successful program as well. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Derek? All right, thank you. All right, then we'll move on to our next report. John Steinbrenner, elementary principal at Lincoln School.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. Derek didn't say it directly, but we just have a great opportunity here in Fergus Falls to work with some really, really tremendous kids. Just fantastic students and families living within our community, and it makes this job really, really enjoyable. So, thank you. Thanks to Derek and Amelia. Amelia touched on, touched on a lot, but within Amelia's report, there was, there is significant attention paid to our district's goal number one this year of having Otter Preschool students meeting kindergarten readiness schools. And what Amelia highlighted for us is that Otter Preschool students demonstrate that higher level of readiness for kindergarten when compared to their grade level peers who did not participate in Otter Preschool. So I think from that standpoint, we should be really proud of the work that we're doing. And then the extension of that is what are we as a school district, and what are we as the adults doing to have our organization, our school, ready for students and families? So our, our students are becoming ready as they're working through our preschool system, and then what are we doing to further that readiness? And I think that's where our focus has been this year, working with our preschool and kindergarten staff together, both in leadership and within staff meetings, as just talking about what those bridge opportunities are to recognize early on students who might need some additional support, and then also just talking about some, some common language that that exists and can be improved upon, so that as students leave Otter Preschool and enter into kindergarten, that they truly have some, some familiarity with our building. And so that, that readiness piece still, still relies on, or depends upon the adults, but it's, it's less student dependent. How much have they learned, and rather, how can we support and accommodate those students? So it's just kind of a shift in thinking that we've been making. And, you know, something, something that is, is small that we've highlighted this year in our discussions is, small yet impactful, is the idea of synergy in our student management system. And it's a bit of a, it's super easy to use once you're in it and you've used it for some time, but that onboarding process of having families ready to register and have their parent portal set up, that's just something that we can do better as an organization, and it's something that we're, we're moving toward. Even with having our students enrolled within the, within the school, within synergy, so that students can, or that parents can see what that system looks like. And it's just one less shock, one less shock in the fall, and one fewer things to, to learn. And so those are just some of the things that we're focused on now, as far as being a ready school. Next, this is an extension of the readiness for kindergarten that, that was highlighted, and Amelia talked about, talked about reading. But the next goal is achieving grade level literacy with all students. We took our fall baseline assessment earlier in September, and that was within the MAP test. And what those results indicated is that 90% of our kindergarten students, they score at or above average when compared to the national norm group. So they're doing really, really well. 52% of students were scoring above the 61st percentile. So we're, we're already starting off in a really great place as far as literacy skills within our youngest learners, and I think that, that continues to show out in assessments in subsequent years. Goal number three, the district goal number three was student attendance, and it's, students will have 95% student attendance. At the end of trimester one, I can report that 71% of our students at kindergarten are within that band. So within that 95% attendance, and that is, they've missed zero days up to two days. The next band was 21% of students were in 90 to 95% range, and that's three days up to five days that they've missed. And then 8% of our students are at less than 90%. So that's five or more days that they've missed. So work, and first, thanks to, thanks to Lynn Johnson for crafting all these numbers and presenting it in a way that was understandable, just really helpful, and, and just grateful to Lynn for this information. The other piece of that is that 8% of students, Lynn and I are in, in communication weekly about who those students are. She's letting me know and working through our process to support those families and to help them figure out what we can do to get those kiddos into school. So overall, on that goal, 71% of students are meeting. And it's, it's a little bit tricky in that, you know, one, one illness at this point in the school year, three days where a kiddo is sick, that, that might move them down a band, but I think this will be, this will, this is a good benchmark here for us to look at, and will be nice for us to review again, especially at trimester two, to see how we're doing. Goal number four, students will treat staff and peers respectfully. I think our kindergartners and preschool students are doing pretty well. Multiple hugs per day, if that means anything.
I got a round of applause today when I was there.
Yeah, yeah. It's just really a lovely place to be, and adults like Missy are happy to come back.
We are, definitely.
Okay. And there's just a few side notes here. We did celebrate our 50th day of school. Special thanks to the, the teachers there at Lincoln School for making that a great day of celebration, and to Mr. Jesse Thorstedt for coming in to perform for us. We'll be publishing our winter/spring ECFE brochure and mailing that out the end of December, so that will be available to family and community members. And, you know, we've just had ongoing visits. Missy was there today, as she mentioned. And then earlier, that was the end of last week, we had Otter Tail County Solid Waste come in and do an upcycling project with us. And so the, the space itself is really accommodating. We've used the STEM space for those activities, and it's just really worked out so well. And you got to use the Lincoln Community Room today, which was also lovely. So from my perspective, you know, goals exist, and we're going to continue to strive toward those, but I think we're, we're on the right track. Any thoughts from the group?
Questions for John? Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, then we'll move on to our next elementary principal at Cleveland. Can you run?
It's been months since we've been here, so I just, I brought some information to share about all of the things that took place in November at Cleveland. And as I think about these in terms of events, they're really opportunities to expose kids to things that they could become involved in down the road, and just add to helping them become well-rounded students and be aware of things that they can participate in. But during the month of November, building wide, 4th and 5th grade, we're able to attend the preliminary, or I should say preview, of Mary Poppins musical. It's, it's convenient for us to walk through the alleyways to get from Cleveland to Kennedy, and we fit in the auditorium with the middle school students, and, and really enjoyed that, that performance of Mary Poppins. We also enjoyed a performance from the High School Chamber Orchestra. They came over to the Cleveland Gym and performed for the students. And that's really a neat opportunity for kids who wouldn't otherwise attend a concert to hear what a full orchestra sounds like. And they play some familiar songs that students really, really enjoy, like Star Wars and Airfire and those fun things. We always end with the school song, so everybody was singing and clapping along with the Chamber Orchestra as they played our school song. We had a Veterans Day program on November 11, and our Veterans Day program at Cleveland is really a learning opportunity for students in which they're, they're performing, they're singing the patriotic songs. And this year, we had our noon supervisor, Dave Armstrong, is a veteran, and so he was our guest speaker and shared about some of his decisions and experiences as he served our country. And then just last week, we had Sarah Ronavick, our guest artist, come in and deliver an art lesson with each of the classes. And I was, I missed grabbing some 3rd grade examples of art, but this is what the 4th grade, or the, not 3rd grade, I'm kidding, my 5th graders did. She talked about, they used tempera paints, and they talked about line and horizon. They did some blending of colors, and then texture, how to add texture to the field at the bottom of the picture. And these students used some similar colors, there were some others, but it's, it's neat. She does the project and as she's teaching, and the students really, really enjoyed all that they were having. And then Chuck Black, who is a wildlife artist who won the 2024 duck stamp contest, the federal duck stamp contest, came to Prairie Wetlands Learning Center and spent a day with our 4th and 5th grade classes, and provided a lesson for them, gave them some tips and things to consider as they have their opportunity to design a duck stamp that will be entered in the junior duck stamp contests this year. I think he enjoys that day as much as the students and teachers do. He has ties to Fergus Falls, and so we're grateful that he likes to hunt in this area, and, and it's convenient for him to come right around deer hunting openers. So we enjoyed our day with Chuck Black. Next week, on December 3, our 5th grade orchestra has their first concert of the year here at Kennedy Secondary School in auditorium with the middle school students. On Thursday, December 19, our 4th grade orchestra students perform their first concert of their career, and that's for their families and classmates. And we set up the gym so that that's performed right after their morning rehearsal on Thursday, December 19. I also wanted to note, one thing that we do, we like to accentuate positive and really help kids focus on these character traits that add to quality citizens and things that their choices that they're making. So each week, teachers nominate or recognize a student from their classroom, and the students get a small version of this otter character card. And we take a picture of the group and put it up on a bulletin board. So this means a lot, and sometimes I have fun with this, where I go to the gym when the Prairie, morning Prairie students are here, and I don't read the name right away, but I just read what the teacher has written. It's a description of the student, and it's kind of interesting. They start looking around, and they conclude who that message is about before the student's name is read. So they're really, when they're nine and 10 years old, they're really paying attention to, you know, those around them. And so these, these really do make a difference. Today at Cleveland, we kicked off our annual service project, which benefits the Otter Tail County Humane Society. This year, we had two students ask some questions on a video, and then thanks to Jesse Thorstedt, our, you know, one of our gurus, technical, technology gurus in the district, he went out to the Humane Society and recorded the answers. Jaclyn provided some answers on the video, and then we were able to push the video out. So it was great to have those students involved in the kickoff this year and participate in that. And then, of course, we're doing our pet on parade as well, where the students can upload a picture of themselves with their pets, and we broadcast that on the screen in the lunchroom, so they have that opportunity to share about their beloved pets. And then tomorrow marks the end of first trimester. So I, I too brought some attendance data with, to share with you, and this is preliminary data, thanks to Lynn Johnson. She summarized the first 56 days of school, and we'll just freshen this up too once we give today and tomorrow a count of four. But at Cleveland, our 4th grade students are achieving 57% of having 95% or higher positive school attendance, so 57% of them. 84% of the students are achieving 90% or greater. So here's that band. And as John Steinbrenner was just describing, a broken arm and you're out for a few days, or an illness that spans a few days really impacts those numbers at this time of the year, but we can kind of look at that trending data. We, we have 27 4th graders who are excited about having 27, 27 days of perfect, or we have 27 students who have had perfect attendance in 4th grade. And it's, it's interesting when they're getting picked up for an appointment they might not know about, if they're like, no, I want, I don't want to miss a day of school, or they're going, they're striving for perfect attendance. So they're aware. And then in 5th grade, we have 36 students who have perfect attendance. 53%, 53% of the 5th graders are achieving 95% or higher positive attendance. 83% of them have 90% or higher positive attendance. So we're working, we're working with those families who needs this, need some support, either the student or the parents. So we're drilling down, and again, Lynn Johnson doing a really, just an excellent job on making contact, reaching out, sending letters, and communicating. So good things are happening in that regard. And then lastly, this Wednesday, teachers will be wrapping up their grading for our first trimester, and we will send progress reports home with students on Friday, December 6. So I'll leave you for Thanksgiving. With that, I can ask if there's any questions up there, or some?
Any questions for Tini? Okay, thank you. Okay, then we'll move on to our middle school principal, Ivan Hertz.
Hi, everybody. I just need to do a couple of thank yous for our Veterans Day program. We held our own, second year of doing our own Veterans Day program in the afternoon, separate, separate from the high school. Mr. Comro, director of the Otter Fury, Ms. Molly created our programs and made those. programs and made those. Ms. Stich and Ms. Anrude were part of the committee that developed that, the whole ceremony that we had. And then our SRO Officer Cedarburg was our speaker this year. He told a little bit about his career for students. So I think that was, that was kind of neat for them to see, oh, you know, and there are a lot of people among us that kids don't realize too. So we had a very nice program. We had our Patriots pen winners. First place was Brock Nelson, second place was Walker Breezy, and third place was Fianazri. So they were recognized at that, at the ceremony as well. So really nice program. First quarter honor roll, this is big, this has been interesting to me, but we had, we have a total of about 557 students total in the middle school. And I have it by grade and A and B, and maybe that's a little too much, but I'm gonna, I'm just gonna tell you, out of 557 kids, 395 students met the criteria for being an A and B honor roll student. That's 71% of our kids. That's aligned what it was last year when you pull 2023 and you compare it, and I go, oh, we're about right there again. So yeah, 71% of our kids are achieving honor roll status. First quarter percentage attendance, I'm moving on to attendance. Last year we announced our attendance by period. And what we did is we took all the possible periods that could be attended. So we take the number of days, the number of periods, the number of students, and I tell you how many periods are totally available to be attended. And last year and this year, we're in the 95% area for all three grade levels. And then I said, well, I've always kind of been interested, I said, hey Lynn, we need to do this by student. And that's what we heard, I think Tindy mentioned it that way, and also Mr. Steinbrenner, I believe, mentioned it that way. So if we do it by student, our numbers become a little, little more similar to what you heard from them. 95% attendance. And now we're on first quarter, so we're only, I think it was like 42 days. So 42 days, you get to miss two days, and you're at 95% attendance, one day a month. 62.8% of our middle school kids had 95% attendance. 62.8 had 95% attendance. So that means, you know, 38%, 37% missed more than that goal. But similarly, when you, when you talk to the next band and you go down to 90% attendance, then our attendance, which is now missing four days or less, it goes to 86.3%. So we have a lot of people come in nine out of 10 days. 86% of our students come nine out of 10 days, miss two days a month. I'm interested in that attendance record for myself. I want to miss two days a month, Mr. Hertz.
Not happening.
Not happening. Okay, so we have work to do. The middle school, as you all know, I'm transitioning again here, as, middle school, as you know, is the only building in our district that's still on quarters. And so at the end of quarter one, we had a half a day for our grading and, which has been traditionally the way it's been done. And other schools have their PD sessions. Well, we're at the end of trimester one, and we don't need grading time. So now we have our PD session. And we've lined up some really, I think, some good stuff for our staff for Wednesday. From 8:30 to 10:30, we're doing reading across the curriculum. It's one of our goals. Literacy is one of our school board goals. So I reached out to Lakes Country Service Co-op and we have, we have a crew of people coming, Compass Regional Literacy Program. That's just coming to visit. So we're gonna go reading across the curriculum. This will work for teacher's licensure, but also give us all a common language. And this is my fourth year, the number of people that have turned over in the time I've been here is just, it's just constantly changing. And I think getting us all on the same page would be really helpful with common strategies that we can use. And then working with our special ed department, Nancy Reard primarily, but then also Ellen Anderson. And you know, I like to use humor just a little bit, but I kind of always tell everyone to have a top 10 favorite people. And the joke, now that I met Ellen Anderson, someone else got kicked out. And I don't know who it was in the top 10, but she is quite the gal, just a really impressive educator. Instantly drawn to her, I said, Ellen, you are the gal for the job. And so what we're doing is Special Ed 101. We are, we're just gonna go baseline with that as well. This is what Special Ed should look like. We just launched our own program. Nancy and Julie Domino have been working amazingly hard to pull this all together. And we have young people that are teaching out of licensure areas and special ed staff that aren't licensed, they are licensed correctly, but not trained or have an amazing amount of experience. So we thought, you know, let's get all on the same page with respect to free and appropriate public education, least restrictive environment. So we're gonna, we have 60 minutes on Special Ed 101, the basics of special education presented by Ellen Anderson. So I'm really pleased that that's gonna happen. I think that'll, again, provide us a nice foundation. Things get great over the years, and I've learned that, a nice to have a little reset. So, and then our afternoon work will be our continued work in PLCs where we're doing a number of things. One of the big items that comes to mind with our PLCs right now is in our math department. We have our Gifted and Talented Program, our Accelerated Math Program in seventh and eighth grade. We're gonna, we're gonna have our math teachers write our own test for that. It sounds like it's been a topic that's been brought up in the past. So they're gonna spend PLC time writing our own test. That'll, that work will start on Wednesday, so I need to attend that. But are they testing aptitude or ability to problem solve, or standards, or a combination? And then that's something we can review yearly based on the results that we have from students. But that will give us another data point. And really, the biggest, the biggest challenge we have as a school is when they come to us, usually from out of state, not always, we don't know how to place them. I think I should be in accelerated math. Oh. And of course, we could go through the book and those types of things. To have our own test and know how our students have scored on that test will be a really good data point for us to use. Because we usually try to fill up that, that section. We fill up that section full and fuller than full gets to be a little harder for teachers. So that's some of the work that PLCs will be working on. We're also middle school concert season. Our band concert was last Thursday. Orchestra on December 3, that's next Tuesday. Our choir is December, December 12, sixth grade choir is December 12. That's at noon, as we've done in the past. And then our seventh and eighth grade is December 16. So we have all those concerts coming up to enjoy the winter music. Any questions?
Any questions for Ivan? All right. Thank you very much. Okay, then our high school principal, Mark Anderson.
Whoa, I spent some time the last presentation talking about all the things we were doing in November. So I'm gonna go through the things that we are doing to meet the school board's criteria for the areas that we're focused on, starting with the ALC, grade level literacy. Both high school and ALC did have PD a couple of weeks ago, and we did some annotation, training for our staff. It's a high best practice opportunity for students who are reading, doing some highlighting along with questioning and focus note taking. The ALC is also doing some training in core reading skills. They review MERS data, collect that information on academic performance, and then choose interventions. The student's acknowledgement tree has visual representation of their academic process. Each time they receive a credit, they get a leaf. Under attendance, Kerry Johnson graciously wrote a grant for both the middle school, high school, for the Promise Fellows Grant, and it's in hopes to have 30 kids at each one of those levels work with someone that comes in with their attendance, trusting relationships, and mental health, and supporting their students and the academics of being here academically to achieve. They also check, they use their MERS data along with the attendance to see how kids are doing academically and if they're in school 95% of the time at once a month during their staff meeting. They also have truancy, Lynn Johnson as the SEP in camp. I know Kerry's been to court a few times, not court, but to camp, talking about students and trying to do interventions and how they're gonna get kids to come to school. They also use the knowledge tree, acknowledgement tree, they're also in that piece. Students will treat staff and peers respectfully. Students work with advisors each day, building trust during advisory and building those relationships. Students also contribute to the school on Thursday by completing weekly tasks for a good school community as recycling, helping teachers with maintaining their classrooms, straightening their classrooms. They also get the opportunity for the student acknowledgement tree for visual representation for their positive behaviors during the school day. IQ Academy, during literacy data collection, the elementary teachers are collaborating, collaborating weekly with work examples. The IQ Academy reading and math intervention lists are screening and progress monitoring every six weeks, share that data with their elementary teachers. And the special education teachers work closely to meet their learning needs of the special education students that are in their classes. The grade level literacy environment, IQ PLC working on focusing as a promote student learning, universal design, online learning platform that is new for K-12. Surveys are going out on the universal design in December, January, and a survey from the administration, myself and Ryan, that kind of connect with ESSA, collecting data in February, March. Students learning coaches and how they feel about their teachers and their content and their learning during from parents and from students. The students who are collecting information will be from 7 through 12, because their learning coaches, mom and dad, K-5, K-6, will be doing the surveys for us. Elementary weekly fun groups meet and middle school weekly Monday morning meetings by grade level and high school, SCL meetings by grade level. Attendance, they're trying to build relationships. The elementary does the weekly fun groups to meet grade level. Middle school does Monday morning meetings and the high school does the weekly activities for SCL. Trying to get kids to build relationships and get on board. Ryan has done a number of opportunities already, I believe two, where they've gone out and tried to meet in person with the staff and himself. We've had some success with that. Focus on warm-up, welcomes when students log into their online class Connect, and tier one teacher calling at least once monthly if a student is failing and recording that connection in their notes. Attendance review, communicating with attendance to families, emails with students that have missed 6, 12, and 18 connects, working with Lynn Johnson for truancy and IQ, weekly SAT meetings with administration and counselors, and tier three online meeting with administration, goal setting, and progress monitoring for attendance and work completion for IQ students. They're reaching out, trying to make connections with not just students, but with parents. The high school literacy, like I said, we work with ALC with the training for annotations. Our new ELA curriculum that we bought a couple of years ago has varied text materials and offers different levels of reading, offers kids the opportunity to read at grade level to support their academic needs and development. The high school also offered ChatGPT training, and you smile, the teachers have found out that it has a lot of good stuff. And what they've done is had the opportunity to work and offer students contents, questions, and support them at their levels they have to be successful, get them the skills they need, and then to develop modifications and accommodations, not just for special education students, but students on 504s, or just students who may be struggling at the moment and they needed a little different type of assessment at work that we can collect information from. Incoming professional development days for the high school staff, we'll be focusing on some reading strategies and support and comprehension. We'll do some of that with district, and we'll also do some of the things like Ivan spoke about with our Lakes Country Co-op group. We have some people, we're working on content with them for that. As far as the ACT, it's one of our high school goals also, is we were, we will be meeting next Wednesday with all our juniors. We need to make sure our students understand the difference between the ACT and the ASVAB test. I think I've spoken to the board about this. About 37% of our students say they're going to a four-year college, and another 20 say they're going to an ACT, or the ACT, to a two-year school. So we really need them to understand which test they should be taking. If you're not going to a four-year college or a two-year school with a chance to go to four-year, is the ASVAB actually the test that you should be taking because it gives you the content on career and college readiness? We know kids in the past in the ACT who are not going on to four-year colleges, don't spend much time taking it too seriously. So we're trying to get the right kids, taking the right assessments to give them their career and college readiness aptitudes that will allow them to make the best choice after high school. And some of the things that our new curriculum for ELA does, it also does hit some of the ACT focus on specific test-taking strategies and content. Red Ink does a lot of the English pieces that we're focused on reading and getting our ACT score out. So we're, they're doing that. It was a nice ad for us a couple of years ago. And I always smile when I go into classrooms and hear kids are doing Red Ink because it's their favorite. Our attendance, we have implemented MERS last year like the ALC does. We run it a little bit differently. Brenda Hanson at the high school does this daily, all day long. She puts a number of tardies, excused, unexcused, attend hours that the students are in, not in school. Lynn Johnson actually uses that for our attendance that goes into our meetings with the county and determines who gets letters from us. And then we use SAT for an opportunity here with us every Tuesday to talk about students, attendance, academics, what is and isn't working. We also have posted in September and October in the foyer, down by the senior foyer, not in the senior foyer, but next to it, so all the kids can see what our grade, each grade level, nine, 10, 11, and 12 have for average daily attendance for that month. Our goal is 95%. We're doing it a little bit different than everybody else. Kids get 10 days basically for the year to get to 95%. So anybody who sits at less than 10, 10 days of excused absences or not out of the building more than 10 days is counted as being here 95% of the time. So currently, because we give them the gift of being 100% as much as possible, right now our ninth grade is at 97%. Of our kids are at 95% attendance if you went for the whole year. Our 10th grade drops down to 92% at 95% every daily attendance. 11th grade is 96%, and our 12th grade is 94%. So we have kids, that number is gonna go down probably another five or six points because we hit the flu season and we have a number of kids that are ill, and that counts towards their 10 days not being in attendance. At the end of trimester one, we'll be giving out perfect attendance. I was going through that the other day. We're gonna have 10 or 15 kids. It's pretty cool to see. So it's nice to see that we have a number of kids that are here every day. And then otter time, one of the things our teachers do, they do grade checks. And then part of those grade check conversations is, all right, what's going on? They look to see where attendance is at, and they start talking about what they need to be doing moving forward, being present in the school. And our counselors and administration also talk to students on those pieces. We have done one à la carte. It's interesting when we do those. It's during otter time. It's a time for kids to build those relationships with the staff members and not just go to teachers they've had, but it's not uncommon to see 30 kids wanting to go down and weld with Mr. Witsky. They find those activities fun, and so we're doing another one on December 18, which helps with attendance, helps with that relationship building, and drawing kids in to be engaged and finding maybe a passion in their high school opportunities. Students will treat staff and peers respectfully. Last year we had 387-ish referrals. Many of them were for attendance. Our current ninth graders struggle with the transition into high school. That's not new to any high school. We are working on things that we believe are gonna help that in the long term, connecting with the middle school teachers about placement and kids in otter time. We also are talking about, we also implemented a mentors program for the, with the juniors and seniors and ninth graders. That has been a smashing hit, both with the teachers and the students, to the point where the teachers want to do an orientation with them the first day of school next year, where they're doing some activities in the school, building those positive relationships earlier. We didn't get started till October this year, so we'd like to start right away in September. If our mentorship continues to work, hopefully that will help freshmen be here, be present, feel more confident. Right now, our referrals, our ninth graders double everybody else. Our ninth graders are getting more referrals than our juniors, our sophomores, and seniors. And we both have student support room and the wellness space that offers connections for students. And like I said before, Kerry Johnson wrote that grant for us, and I'm really hoping that that comes in so we have another person that can focus on some of the students who we need to connect with the most and with them on a daily, weekly basis. Any questions?
Is it normally, is it normal to have ninth graders be hired for referrals, or is it just this particular grade?
I would say yes. Your seniors are usually your smallest referrals because they figured life out. And, but our ninth graders are, we have a crew this year a little bit different from last year. I would say it's probably up And, but our ninth graders are, we have a crew this year a little bit different from last year. I would say it's probably up from last year. Rumor has it, next year's might be down. I think it just depends on the group of kids. We have a small group that likes Mr. Tilke and I. So they spend a little extra time with us over what some of the other kids do.
Any other questions for Mark? Alright.
Thank you.
Then our final report tonight is Superintendent Drake.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First, some thank yous. I want to thank Berkeley Pajari for her work. So Berkeley's new to us this year, but she's really done a nice job with our Native American program. And November was National Native American Heritage Month and appreciate the work that she's doing with our American Indian students and families. So we have our annual plan that gets submitted to MDE, ready to go here. Also appreciate her work developing that. I want to thank my colleagues for all that they do. We celebrate that during last week's American Education Week. But as you listen to the reports from the building principals tonight, there's just a ton of work taking place and a lot of really good work going on in the district. And my appreciation to the principals for their leadership and to the teachers and support staff for their dedication to our students. But really it is an entire team from everyone from the school board to the district office to custodians who, mechanical staff who keep the buildings running and clean, to food service and everyone that comes in contact with these kids and makes this a great place to go to school. So what is asked of public education is unlike any other organization out there and appreciate the dedication and hard work. Speaking of support staff, we had Education Support Professionals Day on November 20th. And this is something especially important to me. That's how my mom made her living. And so I know the impact she had on the students she worked with and the same is true with our staff here. Often they are the first face to greet students as they come into the building and the last face they see to wish them a nice evening as they go home. So appreciate again the impact and dedication they have. Thanks to Amelia Lamar for her work in preparing the world's best workforce. And hopefully the board appreciated the breakdown that took place this year with each of those, especially each of those kindergarten readiness skills. We have not done that before, so this was a first in analyzing it that way. And appreciate her time and effort teasing out the data so that it really makes sense in each one of those categorical readings. Huge thank you to FM Bank for their generosity in donating a bunch of coats and mittens, hats, personal hygiene items to the Otter Closet. Also want to thank Matt Johnson for leading the middle school student council members out to help a resident by raking the lawn. This is part of our community involvement and community service. It's part of our Otter Portrait of a Graduate and really nice to see our students getting out in the community and serving to a community, giving something back to a community that's very, very generous to us. Principal Hurst mentioned the middle school band concert last week. Excellent attendance for that. Both directors did a fantastic job working with their students, so that was very nice. And we are playing host to the high school band concert tonight. I had just a little taste of it today in the auditorium as they were rehearsing and it's going to be a wonderful show tonight. Some congratulatory notes. So this is a wonderful opportunity, the School Excellence Showcase at the MSBA. So that's this Minnesota School Board Association's Leadership Conference that takes place in January. And we have the sixth grade social studies mini Minnesota museums that will be one of the School Excellence Showcase exhibits. So congratulations to Nikki Wildy for her work with students and congratulations and thanks to Missy for nominating that program for consideration. Really a wonderful honor and I'm looking forward to seeing our showcase down there as well as the other schools' work. We did have, we had a number of swimmers that made it to state and our top performing, the one that made it into the second day of competition was the freestyle relay team. This is the same group of young ladies that broke the school record. And they didn't swim quite as fast down there at state, but still had a wonderful showing and ended up placing 16th in that relay group. So congratulations to them. And then I'm going to close with something a little bit fun, more than a little bit fun. I think it's fantastic. But the kindergarten students and staff celebrated 50 days of learning and Jana Johnson put together a little two-minute video that I hope that you enjoy. Hopefully all this works well. So we can work hard and we can have fun too. And as you can see, the staff really put a ton of work into making the 50th day of learning a real special event for the kids. And I really appreciate that. So, any questions?
Any questions for Superintendent Drake? Alright, thank you. Okay, then we'll move into our general consent items. We have a minute from our November 12, 2024 board meeting and then we will move to our bills.
Okay. Steve and I came in early and met with Renee and went through the bills. Went through 67 pages of bills for a grand total of 1.7 million. Some of the highlights, we bought some $10,000 for girls hockey equipment and that was for pass-throughs. I paid for the boosters, appreciate that. Paid $19,000 to climate control and that was for a project on the control system over Cleveland. And that's notable because that was our last payment. I think that was about a $149,000 project. So that one should be done by now. We kind of checked for $31,000 for a cutting laser machine. It was in our, for, I'm not sure what it cuts.
Part of it was YST grant that.
That's right. Yep, yep. $20,000 out of the $30,000 was for the grant. So we appreciate that. We also had 200, of that 1.7 million, 231,000 went for building construction, the bulk of which was over at Lincoln. And I think most of that was for the drywall, which was the bill's came in late. And so I think we have about, what, about $400,000 in retainage of Lincoln, so we shouldn't see too much more on Lincoln. So a little bit of food service, a little bit of community service and $1,400 for student activities. So yeah, so again, 67 pages seems like a lot, but 25 pages of that was Amazon credit card bills. So there's a lot of detail there that we enjoy going through. So I want to thank Steve for coming early and thank Renee for having everything in order as usual. And I'll take any questions.
Alright, thanks Kirby. Okay, then we'll move on to personnel and feeling.
Good evening, everyone. Plan's a little short tonight, which is a good thing. Under support staff hires, we have two new special education care professionals, Rebecca Forster and Danielle Thompson. They both will be working Fridays full-time in their positions. Alicia Trakas, a non-public school registered nurse effective today, Monday, 25th, November 25th. This position is funded through non-public aid dollars and so we provide that services to our non-public schools, which is Hillcrest and OLB on a annual basis. And then we have Avery Albertson and Caitlin Moxness. They both are CODAs and they will be substituting one day a week. Avery's going to be Fridays and Caitlin Moxness will be doing Wednesdays. And this is to fill in for a maternity leave for occupational therapist. So I would recommend, oh, last thing, I'm sorry. Support staff termination, Carl Rivera, night custodian here at Kennedy Secondary School and that'd be effective November 14. So I would recommend these items for school board approval tonight.
Can I get a motion to approve our general consent items?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second it.
Any discussion on them? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Consent items are approved. We don't have any old business. We'll move into new business. Our first item is a 2023-2024 Fergus Falls Public Schools World Fast Workforce Report that we received from Amelia tonight. Can I get a motion moved with that?
So.
Okay. I'll second it.
Any discussion on that?
Just a big thank you to Amelia for doing a good job on that.
There you are. Those statistics were really beneficial.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That report is approved. And we have a resolution establishing combined polling places for multiple precincts and designating hours during which the polling places will remain open for voting for school district elections not held on the day of a statewide election. We just wanted to put this in here as a reminder of the various polling places throughout the community.
Annual resolution.
Annual resolution.
Annual resolution, right.
Could someone offer the resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution before its adoption.
And a second?
I'll second that.
And Missy, will you take role?
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Limkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes.
Steven Bigassa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. So we'll move on to item number three. We have a resolution. Resolution authorizing issuance of certificates of election and directing school district clerk to perform other election-related duties. Whereas the board has canvassed the general election for school board members held on November 12, 2024. Now therefore be it resolved by the school board of independent school district 544 state of Minnesota as follows. Number one, the chair and clerk are hereby authorized to execute certificates of election on behalf of the school board of independent school district 544 to the following candidates. Kelly Bra, Steven Bigassa, and Jenny Christensen, who have received a sufficiently large number of votes to be elected to fill vacancies on the board caused by expiration of term on the first Monday in January next following the election, based on the results of the canvases. The certificate of election shall be in substantially the form attached here too. After the time for contesting the election has passed and the candidate has filed all campaign financial reports required by Minnesota statutes, Minnesota statutes, chapter 211A, the clerk of the school board is hereby directed to deliver the certificates to the persons entitled thereto personally or by certified mail. The clerk is hereby directed to enclose with the certificate a form of acceptance of office and oath of office in substantially the form attached here too. Could someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer the resolution and move for its adoption.
And a second?
I'll second that.
Missy, will you take role?
Yes. Steven Bigassa.
Yes.
Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Limkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. The resolution is adopted.
Thank you.
Our next item is a resolution of governing board supporting Form A application to Minnesota State High School League Foundation. Whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation was formed to provide support for Minnesota's high school youth to participate in athletics and fine arts. Whereas the governing board of ISD 544 recognizes the value of student participation in extracurricular activities. And whereas the Minnesota State High School League Foundation is offering grants and funding to assist schools in recognizing, promoting, and funding extracurricular participation by high school students in athletic and fine arts programs. Therefore be it resolved that the governing board of ISD 544 supports the school's application to the Minnesota State High School League Foundation for a Form A grant to offset student activity fees. Someone offer that resolution and move for its adoption?
I'll offer that resolution and move for its adoption.
I'll second.
Will you take role, Missy?
Yes. Kirby Anderson.
Yes.
Natalie Knutson.
Yes.
Melanie Cole.
Yes.
Matthew Limkey.
Yes.
Missy Hermes, yes. Steven Bigassa.
Yes.
The resolution is adopted.
Thank you. Our next item is the revision to the current school board policy number 606.5, library materials, stating a change in language that our library administrator will provide an annual report to the board. Could someone offer that motion?
So.
And a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on that one? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. That revision is approved. Then we have the 2025-26 high school course proposals that we heard about at our last board meeting. So renaming some of the existing courses to Tenor Bass Choir 1, Tenor Bass Choir 2 for musics, Auto Philharmonica for music, Intro to Foods for facts, replacing Advanced Studio Pottery with Independent Study Ceramics. And then some new courses that were discussed, Laboratory Procedures for Science, College Medical Terminology for CNA program and Independent Study for officiating useful office. Can someone offer that motion?
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion on those? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. Those courses are approved or the proposals are approved. Our next meeting is Monday, December 9, 2024, 5:15 here in the Otter Community Room. We will have a couple of public meetings at that one. Our technology plan and internet safety policy and also our Fergus Falls Public Schools, Public Schools Tax Cable 2025 will also happen that night. Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So.
And a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say nay. We are adjourned.